Councilor Dahl?
Jordan?
This would be what? My apologies, try it again. Mayor St. Ors.
Here.
Meeting was called to order, for those watching remotely. When they're not calling, we'll call.
Yes, please call the roll.
Councilor Carlson.
Here.
Councilor Dahl.
Present.
Councilor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Gilmore.
Here.
All present, the two, Councilor Dahl and Councilor Carlson, remote.
Thank you. That takes us to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or changes that they'd like to propose from the council? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you Connie, and thank you Ethan. Roll call please.
Councilor Carlson.
Aye.
Councilor Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilor Dahl.
Aye.
Councilor Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor St. Ors.
Aye.
As all.
That takes us to our Proclamations, Commissions, Petitions, and Announcements. And the May Recycling Award recipient is Robert Newman at 423 Second Street North. He'll be awarded for his recycling efforts with funding made possible with a grant from Washington County. And the Bayport Citywide Cleanup Day for residents will be held on Saturday, June 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Lakeside Park. Visit the city's website for a list of materials accepted and disposal fees. That concludes our Proclamations, Commissions, Petitions, and Announcements, and leads us to our open forum. The open forum is a time within our meeting that we set aside 15 minutes for topics that are not on tonight's agenda. And so I know that we have several folks visiting with us this evening. So first, I'd like to call upon Anna Wilczek from Anderson Elementary School.
Good evening, Mayor St. Ors and council members. Thank you so much for providing me with just a little bit of time today to come here and tell you a heartfelt thank you. We have just wrapped up the school year. Today is the first day that our students and our teachers and our paras and all of our staff are hopefully home just resting after what's been nothing but a roller coaster year. I'm here because I need you to know the role that all of you played in supporting our kids, our teachers, our families, and just all of us in a year that's been unlike any other in education. And so I just wanted to share a specific thanks about a very special gift that you provided to our school that has made a difference throughout this crazy school year. So I've shared, I'm hoping you can see the presentation I have. The joy that you see in those students is how heartfelt we really are coming to with this thanks. And so I'd like to just be able to, I hope I can just proceed with clicking here. Awesome, okay. So there are so many ways that we can, we can thank you, things that we want to thank you for. But specifically, it was the donation of the CARES Act funding to be able to provide our classrooms with seven new interactive boards. I need you to understand what our old boards are like. You know, we recently had our 100 birthday celebration at Anderson. I think some of the boards could probably have been displayed as part of the walk through history. And so when you were able to dedicate funding to us for this really important technology, I just need you to understand how much that helped us during this pandemic year of learning. And so take a peek. We had those old boards and now we have seven new ViewSonic interactive TVs with carts that are in classrooms and being used throughout our school. This is just a few of the ways that those boards have helped students. This is a picture actually of one of our staff members who, when she was on quarantine at home, could still teach art to her group of students, using the screen, big, bright, and bold, being able to demonstrate and model things for her students and interact with them and have conversation while she couldn't even be in the classroom. The same thing held true for our students. There were times when we might have had a student who needed to be home. And when that student was at home, they could be brought right into the classroom too, and we could see their faces, they could see the other students in the classroom. And please take special note that our teachers were the people who made this kind of experience happen for kids who needed to be home. And with that, I have to tell you just one of the many comments of thanks. This is from Julie Ekren, our second grade teacher. And she just said, "Our new smart TV is reliable, flexible, and engaging for all students. It has technology tools embedded that make it much easier for everyone to use and everyone, including students. It's the kind of board where teachers certainly use it, but our kids can interact with it too." So this has just been a wonderful gift to our school and in a year like no other, something we really needed. So I just wanted to definitely share a heartfelt thank you for thinking of us, thinking of our school, and making that donation possible so that you could help so many kids. I also wanted to take a minute to share another thank you. It's just a testament to the love that we feel from this community. It's not every elementary school that gets to have a retiree parade. And I am actually saying goodbye to six staff members at Anderson Elementary this year. And what we were able to do because of the love of Chief Eastman for our school and her team, you see, of course, Officer Larry and Officer Brittany, who we just admire and respect and have such positive relationships with the kids. You're seeing that that leadership of Chief Eastman, staying connected with our school and those officers, doing something really special to show kids how much we care for our teachers who are leaving and how our community cares about education and the value of teachers. So we had a retirement parade led by Officer Brittany and trailed by Officer Larry and those teachers, for them, that meant the world to them as they head off to retirement. It was really a special day for all of us and you can see from their smiling faces, it's something they will talk about with their families and their friends for a very long time. And again, something that only can happen in Bayport. So with that, I just want to again, share my heartfelt thank you. These children that are pictured here are just a few of the hundreds of kids at Anderson Elementary who feel your love and support. Thank you so much for thinking about our school, for supporting us in so many ways, not just during this difficult, challenging year, but all the time. We feel it from you and we just want you to know how much that means to all of us. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Wonderful to hear.
It's not your fault. I was doing that earlier.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. All right, so we have, our next presenter is Eliza Klebek.
Hi. Yes, Eliza.
Anderson Corporation.
And Cotton Corporation.
Eliza, are you on the line?
Yes.
Eliza, if you want to try.
Can you hear me? This is Eliza. Sounds like maybe those of us online can, maybe they can't in the room.
Yeah, you're coming in really clearly.
We're getting feedback in the chambers. I'm not sure if you're hearing that Connie and John and Eliza, but...
Eliza, if you want to go ahead and try.
Now you're muted.
Eliza, if you want to go ahead and try now.
All right, how's this? Can you hear me now, Adam?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you. Eliza Klebek, I lead Communications and Community Relations for Anderson Corporation. Thank you, Mayor St. Ors and council members for inviting me here today. And on behalf of Anderson Corporation, I'm pleased to present the city with a contribution of $50,000 to further the conservation area efforts along the St. Croix River, just south of the, our plant in Bayport. And through this contribution, we're just really honored to continue to support the work that the city is leading to create additional conservation and green space and public access to the river for all Bayport residents. And we thank you for all the work that you're doing to steward that effort and residents, but also the conservation of the river and continuing to make sure that this is a great place for everyone who has the opportunity to live here and to interact with the great scenic riverway that we have the privilege of working alongside. And many of us have the privilege of also being able to recreate. A meaningful way to help advance the work to keep that project moving forward. And we're just proud to continue to be a great partner to the city and to continue to support your work.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Eliza.
I think we're gonna have to use the ARP funds for post-traumatic stress. I'm like, every time, I'm like, oh!
Thank you for your partnership and thank you for your kind words and the contribution.
Well, I'll tell you a thank you very much. Wonderful.
Thank you, Connie. And Mayor St. Ors.
Thank you, Eliza.
I didn't hear you, but I think there's an echo. Appreciate all of your work.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Hell, it is.
Hey, Adam, this is Alan. We're not able to hear the mayor. I think that's coming with that feedback that you're getting there. I don't know if you can turn the podium mic off or not.
Who's talking?
Alan.
Oh, he's not on the screen, so it scared me. Where is he coming from?
Jordan? Chief Viser, can you hear me now?
You're very muted. We can barely hear anything.
Can you hear me now? Test one, two, test one, two.
Nope, nope, still quiet.
Can you hear me now? Test one, two. Test one, two. Check, check.
No, I think we're either hearing you through the podium. We were not able to hear Mayor St. Ors when she was talking.
Right.
She wasn't muted. We just had this.
Test.
Oh, there.
We're gonna go with that. So Eliza, thank you so much for your kind words and your contribution and the partnership with Anderson Corporation. We greatly appreciate it and thank you for joining us tonight. And the generous donation will be put to great use. So thank you very much for joining us and apologies for the technical difficulties.
No problem at all, we're all used to that these days, thank you.
We could hear your presentation, so.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna try this a third time and go to our third presenter. And that is Joe Iris Johnson from Washington County with an update on the Highway 36 project. Cross your fingers.
I'm actually joined by Emily Jorgensen. She's the project manager on this, so I'm not sure how I got top of it.
Alphabetical?
Good evening, our mayor and city council members. As Joe said, my name is Emily Jorgensen. I'm a planner with Washington County. And I'm also the project manager for our Highway 36 corridor transit feasibility study. We're joined also by our Commissioner Gary Creasel. This really is a project that was kind of his baby that we've been working on over the past year. We're really close to wrapping up our transit study and we wanted to come to your meeting today and just give you an update on the results. We don't have a specific ask of you at this point, but really felt it would benefit the city council to hear about the work that we've been doing. One of the benefits of being project manager is that you get to delegate. So my assistant project manager Joe is gonna walk us through the majority of the presentation and then I'll come back, first, tell you recommendations and wrap up.
Thank you, mayor and council members. So we know this will be a lot of new information, so we'll start off with some study background and scope of study. We will touch on the study goals and give a high-level summary of public engagement, the results of public engagement that we did. Then we will introduce the transit scenarios that we did for consideration, how we evaluated them, and ultimately get into this recommendations and next steps. So starting with the study scope and goals. Some important context for this study is that, you know, Commissioner Creasel frequently hears from community members and stakeholders that there's a real need for better transit in the greater Stillwater area. This is something that we as county staff here as well. And the county frequently lobbies for increased transit service, but it's not really something that has necessarily translated into Metro Transit priorities. From their perspective, they don't see a large demand and in the past, they haven't viewed frequent transit out here as viable service for them. So Commissioner Creasel and the county board tasked county staff with finding out whether it's feasible to bring transit out to Stillwater area and if so, what the general look, feel, and cost of that might be. So the purpose of this study is to identify transit needs and recommendations that reflect the corridor needs today and what we anticipate for the future. And as part of the study, we are considering transit and transit facilities that would provide alternative travel options for folks traveling throughout the corridor. The study was led by Emily, myself, and the project consultants in coordination with the project management team, which had members of Washington, Ramsey, and Hennepin Counties, as well as MINDOT and the Met Council. The city, the process was also featured ongoing coordination with two technical advisory working groups, which we called TOGS. There was the City TOG, which consisted of staff representatives from each city along the corridor. And then the Operations TOG, which had staff representatives from MINDOT, Metro Transit, and Washington County Community Services. And I want to shout out Bayport's own Sarah Taylor here, who was an active participant on the City TOG and helped to review the deliverables as they came up and get the word out about the study through city channels. I won't get in-depth into the study goals, but I will say that when we were developing the goals, we wanted them to be goals that would address the issues that were identified early during the phases of study. And we know that as we think about the future, we need to be sensitive to existing context. We recognize that there's a lot of growth planned for the corridor, but that some communities prioritize their existing character and do not anticipate changing much. And so we wanted to ensure that we capture that goal as well. While COVID changed a lot of our initial engagement plans, we were able to shift to a lot of online engagement. We conducted virtual focus groups, we hosted and attended virtual meetings. We created digital content, like self-guided presentations and fact sheets that we distributed through our city partners. And one of the key ways that we were able to reach people living, working, or going to school in the Highway 36 corridor was through an online questionnaire, which yielded over 1,200 responses, which for us was kind of a lot. We wanted to learn about people's pre-COVID travel and transit habits and what their interest in transit is and why they may not be taking transit today. And we've tried to summarize all that engagement into these three bullet points. The questionnaire revealed that 73% of respondents are interested in taking transit. The questionnaire did get it a little bit more into detail. This isn't just people wanting to use it once or twice a year for a Twins game. People were mentioning that they wanted to use it up to five times a week for things like work or recreation or shopping. Of most importance to folks were traffic congestion along Highway 36, improving mobility for people who rely on transit, and improving convenience of traveling without a car in the corridor. In both focus groups and questionnaires, two needs really emerged. There's the need for the east-west travel on the Highway 36 corridor in connection to the larger transit network. But then there was also a need for travel within that Bayport-Stillwater Oak Park Heights area. And that's something that we've heard throughout the study, but also before the study from our project stakeholders. Before we get into the scenarios, I do want to review the different types of transit service that we looked at as part of the study. We haven't locked into any particular type of service yet, but what you see on this slide have all informed what has become a suite of transit options and the recommendations that have emerged. Bus rapid transit is a higher amenity, higher investment transit option that operates as sort of a hybrid between light rail and your standard bus route. It either operates in mixed traffic or in its own designated lane. And it's typically all-day, frequent, bidirectional service that has infrequent station locations so as to move lots of people quickly. Express buses, that's your typical park-and-ride service. They operate... Bus rapid transit is a higher amenity, higher investment transit option that, um, that operates as sort of a hybrid between light rail and your standard bus route. It either operates in mixed traffic or in its own designated lane, and it's typically all-day, frequent, bidirectional service that has infrequent station locations so as to move lots of people quickly. Express buses, that's your typical, uh, park-and-ride service. They operate primarily, um, during peak morning and afternoon periods, designed to serve commuters, uh, at, at the start or end of their work shifts. And then local express buses are more like your regular route bus service with more spacing between stops. And they have fewer amenities, but they're also more flexible in their service timing and spacing. Uh, this last one, on-demand public transit, this is an emerging service type that is gaining a lot of traction. It refers to a service that will respond on-call and travel anywhere within a designated region, uh, sometimes even providing door-to-door service. And, and this is something that I'm gonna get into a little bit more in the next slide. So, recall that there were that, those, those two needs that emerged during this study, both in engagement and during preliminary analysis. There's that east-west travel throughout the corridor and that travel within the greater Stillwater-Bayport-Park Heights area. On-demand public transit was identified as a potential recommendation to better meet that second need, that, that travel within the greater Stillwater area. Uh, and it's not a perfect analogy, but some people think of on-demand public transit as dial ride, means Uber or Lyft. Um, and it's really carved a neat, a, a niche for itself as a transit solution in areas that need transit, but where fixed route options have not really been successful in the past or, or aren't, uh, sustainable long-term. Um, there's no formal route that it circulates. Instead, communities designate a specific service area or geographic area, uh, and then users can request a ride via app, website, or phone call. And unlike the Uber or Lyft comparisons, these vehicles are ADA compliant, uh, will sometimes pool riders. They can accommodate bikes or other mobility devices if necessary. Um, and there are no price surges, meaning that there's a lot more reliability around, uh, fares and pricing. There are also more reliable hours of service and more accountability with the drivers. So, with the stage set, I, I'll walk you through the transit scenarios here. There are four transit scenarios, three of which include all the transit types that we just talked about. Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, good call. Yeah. There are four transit scenarios, three of which include all those transit types that we just talked about, uh, the BRT, the commuter express, the local express, then that on-demand public transit. Uh, and the scenarios vary primarily by where the eastern terminus of that BRT is located. Uh, so, for example, in transit scenario one here, uh, the BRT would run from downtown Minneapolis through the University of Minnesota, up Highway 280 to Highway 36, and then stop at Rice Street. And at Rice Street, there would be a connection to that local express bus service type that would connect all the way out to the Stillwater area. Um, to address that peak period commuter need, the commuter express would run from that, uh, Bayport-Stillwater-Oak Park Heights area all the way to downtown Minneapolis, and then an on-demand public transit service area would be established around that Bayport-Stillwater-Oak Park Heights area to serve travel needs within that, that area, to connect to the regional, uh, connections. Scenario two is basically the same scenario, except the eastern terminus of the BRT has moved from Rice Street to Maplewood Mall, uh, which would allow for some connections at that location. And then in scenario three, that eastern terminus of the BRT has moved to Hadley Avenue. The other change that you'll see is, um, the BRT does not run along 280, but goes 36 all the way into downtown Minneapolis, and that's because during preliminary analysis, the further east, uh, that BRT went, the less of a connection there was to the University of Minnesota. So, we just wanted to test that, uh, that routing there to see what that looked like. Uh, this last scenario differs from the other in that it only includes BRT and on-demand public transit, and that's because, uh, once you run BRT all the way to this greater Stillwater area, uh, the commuter express and the local express options become rather redundant and inefficient. So, this would just feature the two options there. And these are the four scenarios we're looking at. And again, I just want to be clear that none of these are being advanced, uh, as a preferred alternative to move forward with engineering. These are just scenarios that we developed to test against each other, uh, to test for feasibility of transit in the corridor and, and compare against each other as to which performs best in terms of ridership and cost. And one of the primary ways that we do evaluate these scenarios is through developing and comparing ridership forecasts, operations and maintenance costs, and, um, capital costs. And this is where we really start to put numbers to some of those scenarios that we just saw. And what we found was that in all four scenarios, they're all very comparable to each other. Looking at this chart, you see the scenarios across the top of the chart, and then you see the evaluation metrics down the left side. And looking at the ridership, you know, you can see while ridership varied slightly by scenario, in the transit world, these are all still quite comparable. And you can see that there is a fair amount of overlap in the ridership forecast ranges. Uh, and one of the key takeaways here is that while scenario two had the highest projected ridership, um, there is no one scenario that is head and shoulders above the other scenarios here when it comes to ridership. That's really the story with all these metrics. Uh, with regard to operation and maintenance costs, we also see a lot of similarity here. Uh, generally, the further east the BRT goes, the higher the ONM costs. Uh, but again, we, we see that no scenario is head or shoulders above the others here. Uh, when we talk about capital cost estimations, that includes things like right-of-way buses, uh, stations and associated infrastructure. And these aren't final costs, but they are used to get in order of magnitude. Uh, and again, it's the same story. They're all very comparable. All, all the different scenarios are very comparable to each other. Uh, but the heart at the center of our study was, you know, are these transit improvements on Highway 36 between the Stillwater-Oak Park Heights-Bayport area and downtown Minneapolis feasible? And the answer is yes. We saw that the transitway investment in the Highway 36 corridor is feasible. We saw that specifically BRT in the Highway 36 corridor is feasible. And we saw that transitway investment along Highway 36 all the way out to the Stillwater area is feasible. So, the question arises, you know, which scenario is best? And the answer is, uh, we don't know. That's not what this was for. This was to determine feasibility in the, in the corridor, and, uh, the next steps would be to determine, um, the future, in future phases of study, that would be something that would be determined, you know, which scenario is best, which one wants to be advanced, if any. Um, and, but this was just to determine feasibility, and, uh, it was. At this point, I'll hand it over to Emily.
Thank you. Great. Thanks, Joe. Uh, so at this point, you may be thinking, what is the county doing? You may be feeling very excited about this, maybe very unsure, because we just showed you a bunch of information and then said it's all the same, which was a surprise to us. Um, so we are thinking about next steps as we're coming out of this study. Um, so we do have some recommendations, and we did order them chronologically, because there's quite a timeline that we're attaching to this. But before we get into those recommendations, we wanted to kind of acknowledge the context that we're in right now and the challenges that we're still seeing ahead of us. So, just starting with the COVID-19 pandemic, which is, you know, why we're in a hybrid situation here, uh, we, we know looking ahead, things are getting better COVID-wise, but we still see a lot of financial challenges and constraints. And particularly in the transit world, we're not really sure where that demand will bounce back. You know that we don't expect park-and-ride service demand to be what it was pre-pandemic levels for quite a long time, if ever. Um, so we're keeping that in mind as we think about our recommendations. Uh, similarly, for this study, Washington County was the only funding partner. Uh, we know moving forward, we'd wanna see some financial contributions from Hennepin and Ramsey. Um, and then we think about our, our partners at the Met Council, Metro Transit, who have their own, uh, different, uh, financial constraints and also competing transit priorities. So, as we think about transit in the Twin Cities, there's a lot of other lines usually associated with the color, whether that's orange, gold, um, there's the rush line, all which are very close, um, in project development, about to enter engineering or perhaps construction. So, a lot of stuff going on in the transit world right now, that we know that perhaps right now is not the best time for us to advance this as a top priority for Washington County. So, with that in mind, uh, we can start with our study recommendations. And so, what we're calling the near term, which would be zero to two years, the themes of this is really focused on what Washington County can control. So, that first one would be to study and consider, uh, a pilot for that on-demand public transit service. That's that blue kidney you saw on all of those maps. This would allow us to identify funding sources, really hone in on where that geographic service area would be, and really understand what that would mean for a service for the county to deliver. We would also want to continue to prioritize maintain and invest in mobility management. Um, this is some of the work that Shiva Holbrook White with Washington County Community Services does now, which is really that day-to-day boots-on-the-ground. People need a way to get somewhere, and they're unable to drive. Um, and she kind of connects them through buses, through lifts, through taxis, through volunteer drivers, to get them where they need to go. So, really kind of continuing to prioritize and fund that work and also track it, because we know that that data will help us in the long run, whatever type of service we do manage to bring, um, to the community. We wanna make sure it meets those needs. Then we have our midterm, um, recommendations. This'll be about three to five years, and this really centers on forming that Highway 36 corridor commission. So, it's usually a commission made up of the involved counties and cities, um, usually created by a joint powers board of sorts. And with that commission is really when you'd have the political, um, power to really identify funding sources, to advance this as an initiative, develop multi-jurisdictional, uh, agreements. And as Joe said, you know, we need a lot more studies in order to figure out kind of what type of transit solution best fits the Highway 36 corridor, and that's what this commission would do. Um, we'd also wanna continue to work with Metro Transit in St. Croix County. Uh, we know that just across the bridge, they're moving a lot of dirt all the time, and we get a lot of their folks coming into our communities. Um, so continuing to see if there wouldn't be a need for transit expansion, uh, across the river, and seeing if that isn't something that we could capitalize as well. And then we have our longer-term recommendations. So, this would be about five to eight years away. So, this would be once we have that corridor commission, um, we'd wanna do things like develop a plan for mobility hubs. So, these are usually areas where you have perhaps a park-and-ride along with a bus stop, maybe some electric scooters or electric vehicle charging. Um, just really if you have kind of a first-mile, last-mile need for your transit trip, you can do it all in one spot. You know that they're really good for economic development. They're really bike and pet friendly. Um, that would go along really well with our second recommendation, which would be to develop a small area plan for transit access areas. So, we know that if we bring transit to communities, we wanna make sure that the area is transit-friendly itself. That's gonna mesh with the community character. Um, so that would be when we pursue those. And then we wanna partner with MINDOT, uh, for what we call, uh, transit advantages, which are usually shoulder advantages. Um, so for folks who maybe do have a car, do like to drive, but are considering taking the bus, getting that shoulder savings time is really kind of what, um, lets people see that, that there's an advantage to taking the bus and really kind of pushes them, um, into making that choice. You really get a good, uh, travel time savings with those. And then we have our ongoing engagement. So, this would be where we partner with, uh, continue to do things like we do now, which is partnering with cities and MINDOTS on our bike and pet infrastructure. We know that when things are bike-ped friendly, they're transit-friendly, um, always looking for grant opportunities and opportunities for partnership. And then continuing to our engagement efforts. So, while we don't have a specific ask of Bayport today, we wanna continue to kind of talk with you all, keep this fresh in your minds, as this is something that we are, um, hoping to move forward in the future. So, that was a lot of information, and, uh, we're happy to answer any questions you might have. And I will frame it by saying we're particularly interested in your reactions to just bringing more transit to Bayport and specifically that on-demand public transit piece.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the council for questions.
This is. So excited to hear this, because when I was on the community thread board several years back, there was a lot of discussion on the need for this type of transportation within the corridor and within the surrounding community. So, I'm excited to see that it's progressed this far. And I also. Down the road, I know, but including that in there, or looking into it anyway. So.
You could hear most of what you said, Connie.
To what?
Oh, there was just a lot of feedback going on in here. So, we heard most of what you said.
Oh, I was just saying, and I can't hear you at all now, Michelle, but.
Oh, no.
I was just saying, I was excited to see that it has progressed this far, because. Thread board, they're identifying the need for, you know, different resources of travel for people.
Yeah, we got that part, so.
And then I just said, I told her thank you, and then I was glad to hear that they were looking also.
And that's where we.
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you. This is.
And I don't hear anybody now.
I agree with a lot of what, uh, with what Connie said. I think it. And, and address a, a huge need in our area in that, um, Highway 36 corridor. So, um. Update and, uh, keeping us in the loop.
I do have a question. Do you think it's gonna work if I talk? Can you hear me, Connie and John? No, I'm muted. Never mind. John, can you hear anything? Hi.
I heard you.
Can you hear me?
I don't know if they heard me.
Can you guys hear me, John, Connie? Can you hear me talking?
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Barely. You're really quiet.
Well, I.
I.
Can you hear me if I?
And then Connie blows my earphones out.
Sorry, John. If I ask a question, could you hear it well enough, and then she can answer it?
Go, go ahead.
Okay. I was just curious. I know that you, you know, you talked a little bit about the survey respondents, and they're from different counties, Ramsey, Washington, mostly, and mostly Washington, and then a little of Hennepin. But, uh, and then you mentioned St. Croix County when you came to the financial part of it, but we didn't actually survey anyone in St. Croix County, because I think that could impact that Stillwater scenario quite a bit, just curious.
Yeah, that's a, a wonderful observation. So, we didn't particularly, um, so because this happened during COVID, we had to pivot all of our wonderful, we had so much, so many great in-person engagement things planned. We had to pivot everything and do everything online. So, the survey really was, um, a big push for us. So, we did get respondents from St. Croix County. Um, it was pretty negligible, specifically because we didn't advertise, um, to St. Croix County on, in a paid social media way. What I will say is their, their ridership was taken into consideration for all of the modeling that we did.
Okay.
So, as we start to attach those numbers, we know already how many folks come from St. Croix County every day and start using Metro Transit, but then, you know, with the opening of the St. Croix Crossing Bridge, things have dramatic shifted the, or shifted dramatically. Traffic is up 30%. So, we have all those numbers which we're able to incorporate in our modeling. So, in our next phases of study, yeah, we can absolutely start to kind of include them and start talking to St. Croix County specifically and start figuring out what that relationship would look like.
Okay, good. I assumed you guys were doing that, but it just wasn't clear in the presentation that that was considered. So, thank you. And thank you for doing this. I think it is a, it's a huge need. And I don't know, it looked like that one line kind of went into Oak Park Heights, but maybe not all the way down to Bayport. So, I don't know how we're gonna be involved in all of that eventually, but it would be nice if it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to go to Oak Park Heights to get, um, a bus from here, but.
Well, and there's a need for workers in every community and to allow them to travel from the metro out to us as well.
Yes.
Because us being is, uh, very important, so. Anything can you think?
Uh, I was interested in the local, the little, you refer to it as the gray, the blue little area.
Yeah.
How that, how that'll work. It sounds like essential pilot program with that in the short term. So, that, that interests me, um, because I think, yeah, moving around, there's, there's not a lot of good options. Uber's not out here, you know, Lyft aren't, they're barely ever out here, and you have taxi services that are, that are, that are okay, but we could always use more, I feel like. So, that'd interest me.
Yes, that's a wonderful segue into our timeline, which is we're, um, visiting with all the corridor city councils who wanted us to come and give them an update. And we're going back to the Washington County Rail Authority, um, in the late summer, early fall with adoption. And then at that point, we'll start to report to the county board of, okay, how do we want to start to kind of do this pilot? How can we involve, you know, the valley community so that you all make sure, if we were to identify that blue kidney in, in, in reality, that we make sure we get the right kind of lines drawn on the map, and, and it's flexible. Um, but it's a wonderful service model. There are examples of it in the Twin Cities already, which are quite successful. Um, and we think that the kind of the, the urban landscape of Bayport, Oak Park Heights, and Stillwater would really lend itself to this type of model, because while you're a suburb, you're not very suburban in the way that you're laid out. So, we think it would work really well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and presenting to us and taking the time. So, we'll look forward to more updates and more conversations, and, uh, it looks like a good, strong plan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, back, is there anyone else online or anyone else in attendance that would like to?
Can we all leave?
Could potentially shorten the agenda.
We might have to. This is.
Is there anyone else online that would like to address the council that we know of, or anyone else here for open forum items that are not on tonight's agenda?
I think they're here for the liquor license, right?
Well, great. Then we will, um, conclude. All right, we're, uh, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda.
I'm gonna speak quickly.
Yeah, oh, my gosh.
Considering, considering, um, a resolution adopting items one through nine, the May 3, 2021 city council workshop bits, the May 3, 2021.
Connie and I can't hear you guys.
I'm going through the consent agenda. I'm going through the consent agenda.
So you could just read it. Initially, that's what she's doing. Well, I did read it. I didn't have any objections.
I did as well, no objections.
Okay, great.
So the May 3, 2021 City Council regular Jordan.
There we go, now we can hear you.
The May 17, 2021 City Council special meeting minutes, the May payables and receipts, and May pumping, building, mechanical and zoning permits report, request for placement of a little free library kiosk at 260 Fifth Avenue North from Anna Ostrofsko. The special event application from the Bayport American Legion for a fire burning ceremony at Perro Park on June 14, 2021. A monetary and in-kind donation of plantings on public property by Dan and Kit Ridgway, and Nicole Bell. The application for new on-sale Sunday and a 3.2% off sale liquor licenses from a 210 BBQ LLC for operations at 328 Fifth Avenue. Any questions, comments, or recommendations to the consent agenda? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of council, there were a couple items in the minutes we were going to, where there were, the last special meeting, Councilmember Carlson was remote, we're just going to make a designation of that on the roll call and the actual minutes. But that was the only chance he brought us.
All right, anyone else from the council have any changes or additions? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
She muted?
Aye.
Looks like she's saying aye, but you can't hear. Do this.
I'm not muted, but I, aye.
Attorney said that's okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Councilmember Dahl?
I couldn't hear what was going on, so I'm abstaining.
Oh, boy.
Did I have to be unanimous? I'm, I'm not going to vote aye for something that I don't know.
We can't hear you, John. Can you thumbs up or thumbs down?
It's the consent agenda, John.
He's thumbs down in something.
Can't hear.
He can't hear us.
So we want to vote on something he can't hear.
Yeah. Well, we have enough of the ayes, is that okay?
We agree, yes.
Okay.
I said aye.
Sorry you had to sit through this.
Does that happen every month?
No, this is our first time with this, trying to do both, and it's not going very well.
And it's our first time being collectively back.
Yeah. We were usually all on Zoom, and it was no problem.
Hybrid is not working for us yet.
And now you can personally test that John likes barbecue, so it is now a vote.
Has nothing to do with you. He also likes alcohol, I think. They're talking about you, John.
So, well, great.
Oh, there, he said, I'm going to abstain on every vote when I can't hear what is being discussed.
Completely understand.
We get it.
Okay.
John, can you still hear me, though?
But that at least allows you to know that
I can hear you.
End this meeting. This is really
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for calling.
Thanks for coming in, being in here. Okay, so we're going to pause until we get this going right. And if we need to, we're going to just cover topics we can tonight, and otherwise table things till the next meeting.
Do we have to make a motion to pause or anything, or can we just pause?
The chair can just
Just do it, okay, good.
We'll recess here.
We've never had to do that.
Just recess for a few minutes here.
Okay.
See if we can get this figured out. We have to come back on record in adjournment, and we'll vote adjournment, you can put it in recess.
Well, I'd like to recess us for the moment.
Thank you, Mayor.
John, you heard the recessing for a few minutes, right?
No. I have to, I've, I've got to turn down so you don't blow me, and I'm not, it's not your fault, but when I turn it way up, then it's feedback, and I mean, it's hurting my ears.
When the three of us talk, it's fine.
My ear, earphones, so.
The speakers there.
Well, I may just, I mean, we'll see what happens after the recess, but we have a quorum.
And, so we can finish it?
I don't really feel like I'm in use. I'm not going to vote it, I don't know what's being voted on. So I, I heard something about the consent agenda, but then there was something added, and I don't know what the heck's being added, so I just feel more comfortable not voting.
Maybe if they got
It's technically not a public hearing.
I think it's one particular mic that's a problem, but what do I know?
I think it's that, because when we're used I was at the podium
Can we go in the other room and
Giving my, my report. Always was an echo there, coming from that mic.
It'd be interesting to swap microphones around and see if the problem moves with the microphone or stays at one particular location.
Al, can you hear them?
I, I have to turn my volume up super loud, and then when the feedback comes, my earphones almost go off.
Okay.
Yep, it's
Because I, I'm only hearing bits and pieces, so I'm kind of like you, John. I feel like I'm hearing some, but I'm not hearing enough, and then
Yeah, I'm, bits and, yeah, bits and pieces of, that's what I just was trying to abstain from. Vote on stuff, it's just
Yeah, there's a few roads that need a four to one, but I don't think anything's a nine, but.
So we'll see, I'll hang tight, I'm at work, but.
Hey, you guys, it's Sarah. You guys are, I can hear them faintly, but I suggested maybe they should all join by Zoom instead of using
That's what I think.
Well, hey, good idea, because we didn't have problems with Zoom.
Yeah, so Adam said they're obviously taking a quick recess, but maybe that's something they'll try out.
I see Adam just grabbed his computer, because it might be the feedback between Adam's computer and the other speakers.
I just feel like the workshop, I didn't, I didn't get a whole lot out of that. I was missing half of what was being discussed. John?
Do they know that?
You, Al, and I could have our own conversation in our own meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Well.
It's kind of how I felt like I was.
Oh, exactly.
I'll join in.
Hey, there we go.
Learned them too, okay. Oh, yeah, I can hear you guys. I have earbuds on, so it was blowing my ear.
That's, that's why I had to turn it down. I was, I already had some problems with my ears, and I would have to abdicate it. Yeah, we'll just, we'll get there.
So, so bring it in.
I don't think we have anything too terribly controversial tonight, which is
No.
Kind of helpful, too, I think, so.
Yeah, a month ago, we tested, and everything was just, everything was perfect. And then he just did something for our session about a couple weeks ago, and it was fine. So can we just, so just open up your, your audio. And see if we can hear them. I'm thinking the tall parts could be the speaker. Can everybody hear me now?
Whoever's speaking, I can hear you loud and clear.
Can we hear them?
Can we put that?
No, these, no, these mics should Can you hear me right now? Testing 123, can you hear me?
What is time limit on the agenda?
Do we have to approve events?
Do we have to approve?
Not necessarily, they'd like to do the batting cages because they have them ready. And then they'd like to get them up. But that other stuff on, other stuff, they were still getting pricing and all that stuff. And the only action they wanted on first St. Croix prep was the batting cages, essentially. Because they were bringing all the other stuff back.
So when were they planning to join the meeting, or were they not?
Rich was going to be at the meeting, yeah.
He's not online right now?
Only if he really needed to, and I told him pretty much so, that he probably did.
We should get, we should get the American Funding Act.
None of it was getting voted on, except really the batting cage.
That I would say is probably for sure. The batting cages would be good to get it done, but I'm assume, I mean, because they probably want to get, what's the time on their grant?
The grant's not a big deal, and the batting cages has nothing to do with the grant, but they have the batting cages, and they'd like to get them up for use this summer.
Because he unmuted the, he unmuted it, so now they can hear us.
Can they hear us?
They can, right? Connie and John, you guys can hear us?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's try this, I have one of the units on the clock. We just want to table the public hearing, and
Well, if everything works.
Well, if it's working.
If everything's working, now we can just go.
So I need advice of how to reconvene.
Yep, we're just coming out of recess and reconvening with the right amount of events. So we're going to recall the meeting in order. So we're going to just recall it on order, and say that we still have a quorum. That we want, the record is still here, so it's still here, but
Jordan, are we ready? So we're going to reconvene the meeting now at 7:00 PM. Or not.
Was it because you brought
And we still have a quorum of all five members present.
Let's try it, could be these speakers up here.
Going to continue, and so we will resume the meeting.
Can they hear us?
Can you hear us now? Yes, good. So, and continue with the agenda.
And, and just for the record, we do still have a quorum. All five council members remain present at the meeting of the recess, yes.
So do we want to move forward? Do you think we want to move forward with the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, I suggest that we renotice that and do it in July.
Okay, is everyone okay with us moving that to the July agenda?
We just need a motion table.
We have a motion to table item, item one under the public hearing.
I can make a motion to table item one
Okay.
to the July meeting.
Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor say orders.
Aye. That will move us to our unfinished business. And to all people participating remotely, please understand that we've been having audio technical difficulties throughout the meeting and workshop prior. So we appreciate your patience, and that's why we're configured in this way and doing the best we can to conduct the city's business. So we're going to jump to unfinished business, and our first item there is to consider a revised proposal from St. Croix Prep Academy for field improvements at Barker's Alps Park. And Matt, I'd like to call upon you to give us the update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at the May 3 meeting, 2021, this kind of discussion was tabled, mostly due to the permanent outfield fence. And staff was given direction to go back and work with St. Croix Prep on different options, and what the Twins grant could be used for. They, St. Croix Prep is currently asking, or at least this memo is currently asking for just batting cages, and those can be seen in the, the documents that was provided. Essentially, the blue outline document is the softball field, and then the red drawn one is the baseball field, and that's where the batting cages would go. The blue softball one is along the third baseline, and then the red one is along the, the trail and the third baseline. Essentially, these would be used for batting practice, essentially, to keep the balls from going different places.
Isn't the red one technically along the first baseline of the baseball field?
I think they
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Sorry, Councilmember Hanson, yes.
Because it used to be third, and they removed it.
Um, and so there are other aspects of this procedure that they're still looking into, along with pricing. They did go back, I know we talked about the outfield fence, and that was kind of a sticking point, but they are looking into a hybrid version. They thought that they may have found a version where it's less expensive to do a removable portion of it, and they'd like to bring that back potentially for, as a proposal. They're also looking at the backstop overhang that we talked about last time to protect balls from going into the wetland. And then the softball dugouts is still a goal, and that was never really a change to anything. For the softball fields, they're getting made exactly like the baseball fields for the dugouts, with a cover and then some solid surface inside the dugout. At this time, they're just asking for permission to go ahead and install the batting cages in the location that is proposed. So this one shows the blue softball field, and then the next one there shows the, the baseball field. It'll fit in between the, the, well, in between the trail and the current location there.
May, is it appropriate time to ask questions? Yeah, are these chain-linked batting cages? So what, what kind of structure are we talking about?
Yeah, John Dahl, they will be chain-linked on the outside, so they'll be see-through, and then on the inside, there'll be a netting so that it catches the ball essentially and slows the ball down.
So the cage itself will be, you know, a permanent, there'll be some sort of footing poured and, and, um.
Correct, there'll be probably.
Posts founded.
Yes, six posts, um, along the long way, six or eight posts, and then chain link on the outside, and then the ability to hang, um, the netting on the inside.
Okay. Um, and then, the, the other question I had, when I was looking at the packet earlier, the, we've got a purple line and a red line for the outfield fence, I know we're not necessarily, is there something distinguishing those two lines?
Sure. So, the purple line is essentially just the current location of the fence, and this was more of a, this is a more of a discussion for the outfield fence.
Gotcha.
There was some concern last time, and I just wanted to show it better, because I don't know that we explained it real well. Um, they were worried about closing off the whole outfield, um, and so
Yeah.
who, I just wanted to show that the current purple fence along the baselines is still wide open, just like it currently is with the, um, the movable fence that's out there currently, or the temporary fence. And there was no intent to ever cl- enclose the whole area, so. That'll, that'll play somewhat of a role in next month's discussion, when they bring back, if they can find a, a feasible temporary fence solution for a part of the outfield fence.
One, one thing, if I could add to it, um, it's faint, but you can see the soccer fields on there, you can see the goals, and you can see the lines. So I know there was concern from the community about, uh, multi-use, um, so that, that shows that with that fence, if that's where it is, I mean, I know those lines aren't perfect, but, um, you can fit, and talking with Tim, you can fit, they do every other year, they'll do one that way, and then they flip it ninety degrees the other way to, to keep the grass from not getting, you know, beat down, so. I guess that's one thing, when we do discuss the fence, that I've no, I've not seen a picture like this, where you can still see the field, but you can, you can get a soccer field in there like, like he had said, so.
Thanks for pointing that out, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I noticed it as well, um, I'm just throwing this out there, because it doesn't hurt. Um, I'm gonna have a hard time supporting any sort of permanent fence, I think it should be all removable, but just putting that out there right now. If part of it can be removable, I think the whole thing should be removable. Just throwing that out there. I know that's not what we're discussing now, I'm okay with the batting cages as, uh, it's shown here.
Okay, thank you, John. Connie, what, any thoughts?
Um, I'm okay with the batting cages too, and I was kinda talking to Adam, I'm, I'm still not sold on a, a permanent fence out there, I'm, I guess, I have my reservations on it. I was glad though that, uh, Ethan, thank you for pointing out that soccer issue, cause that was, I'd gone out there this weekend to kinda look at a little bit more. So, it was easier to see and to be able to tell that they could have, that was one of the concerns. But, for right now, I, I guess I'm fine with all with the batting cages, I don't have a problem at all with that. Um, and I just, I guess I'll have to think a little more.
One, one other observation, quick on the soccer field, that, cause I noticed it too, and, and I know it's hard to tell from just those drawn lines there, but when you take a corner kick in soccer, you, you need some room to maneuver outside of those boundaries.
If you put that backed up, yeah, the one corner, um, well, you can't, I can't point to it, but yeah, move your cursor, like right
Right there.
there is what I.
So, I do have to admit, this is my ten-year-old drawing as a ten-year-old, so, th- those wouldn't be exact, they work, the, the baseball team works closely with the S C V A, the soccer club, and there would easily be enough room in there, um, to, to make a corner kick.
Well, cause they have a temporary fence there now.
Exactly.
So.
That comes down.
But I'm just saying, if it works now with a temporary fence, and the other fence is gonna go in the same place.
Right.
Should be fine. Does, so the soccer field fits the other direction?
It does.
Both ways, yes.
It does, okay, it's, it's hard for me visually to make, I'd be like, it looks like it's gonna get cut off, but, okay. That's good to know, I'm good with the batting cages too, as long as public works, doesn't mind the extra weed whipping, they're gonna have to do around all that fencing and maybe, or whatever.
So we were gonna, so just a, just a, an outline of the batting cages, essentially, we were gonna provide some of the, uh, work to do the batting cages. We're gonna dig out, um, the locations and then put class five down, and so the class five would be far enough past the edge of the batting cages, that it wouldn't involve any more weed whipping, actually.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Very good, anything else? Ethan?
I'm good.
Okay, I don't have any questions regarding batting cages either, so, um, with that, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I don't even know what it, just approving the batting cages?
Yep.
Yes, that's great, thank you Connie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Ethan, and Adam. You're on mute, Adam. We can't hear you.
Can he not hear us?
I don't think he's talking.
He's in his office, right?
Or in the conference room somewhere.
Oh, conference room, lights on, right.
Test one, two, test one, two.
There you go.
There we can hear you.
You.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor State Orders.
Aye.
As all.
Great, thank you, and, um, just for those that are interested from the public, we have been receiving emails regarding the topic of the, um, potential, uh, flex fence of permanent, um, and removable, we are not discussing that any further this evening, it'll be on the July agenda, but we do hear, um, what you're saying and your concerns, and taking those into consideration as well, so just, um, we'll, uh, we'll revisit that in July. All right, so that at least allows them to move forward with that item. That takes us to our item under new business, which is to consider a resolution accepting American Rescue Plan, uh, funding. This was a topic of a workshop prior to the council meeting this evening, and Adam will take us through, um, some details.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I hope you can still hear me.
Yes.
As we've been discussing, or at least very, at very high level, the American Rescue Plan, uh, which was passed in March of this year, uh, gave one point nine trillion dollars, uh, and a large portion of that, uh, in several billions, was being given to state and local governments. Um, as part of the, the local government allocation, uh, there's cities that are fifty thousand more, or uh, so fifty thousand people or more are getting the money directly from the, uh, federal government, and then non-entitlement cities, or non-entitlement units, uh, which are cities less than fifty thousand people, which Bayport does, uh, qualify as, have to apply for, uh, their allotment directly from the state. Uh, the Minnesota Management Budget Office is distributing the funds for, uh, these non-entitlement units. Uh, as part of the application, uh, for these funds, it was recommended that all cities pass a resolution accepting these dollars, and, uh, basically stating that they will comply with all the guidelines, uh, that the Treasury Department has provided. Um, as was mentioned by the mayor, uh, we did have a, uh, workshop prior to the regular meeting, uh, where I presented a little bit of information as to what, uh, types of expenditures were eligible for these funds, and the council provided a little bit of, uh, direction. Uh, one of the items was to provide, or to look into doing more research on, uh, improvement projects that the city, uh, may need to do, that would benefit all the, uh, all the, all the city, um, as well as a couple other small items, um. And, uh, one of the items specifically is covering the lost revenue. Uh, Bayport is fortunate in that in twenty twenty, uh, the city did not experience a large, uh, loss of revenue. Uh, so that, that's, that was good, twenty twenty, um, and it will be good going forward, as it'll free up, uh, some of the additional funds, um, to do other items with, other projects. Um, the funds themselves are being trashed out, uh, in two separate distributions, uh, half will be within the next thirty to sixty days, and then the other half will be, uh, twelve months from now. Bayport's updated estimate of funds is three hundred ninety-five thousand and three hundred twenty-five dollars, uh, that's based on a hundred and five dollars per capita. Uh, our two thousand nineteen census estimate, uh, was just over thirty-seven hundred. So with that, uh, the staff has provided a model, uh, resolution for the council to consider, uh, which is, uh, the model is based off of the League of Minnesota Cities template. Um, and so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise, uh, the resolution is included for you.
Very good, thank you, Adam, any additional questions, uh, from the council? We did, um, discuss that we would make sure that all of this, uh, would be, um, tracked and visible on the city's website, so anyone who is interested would be able to understand exactly what our total, um, allocations are, should we approve and, um, to apply for this funding, and then it would all be tracked, uh, visibly as well, so, um, just knowing that the, the community will be interested in how these funds are being spent, so. If, are there any questions or comments further from the council, if not, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion? Or is it just a resolution? I don't know what I'm doing. I move to accept the Corona that we, that we make a resolution to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you, Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second him. Oh, go for it, John.
We'll give that to John, and, uh, thank you, and Adam, would you do the roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor State Orders.
Aye.
As all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, that takes us to city council liaison reports, oh, we're moving a, a little slower due to our technical difficulties. Um, is there anyone that has anything from the, the council that they'd like to report on? Michelle? Ethan?
I, I didn't, I, uh, they were done in like thirty minutes, and we ran long the last time, so I missed that one, but they, so that went smooth, and then they, could they? It's over the minutes, I guess I could look them up.
Next, you can always bring us up to speed, next time, thank you. Um, Connie, anything big from the W M O?
No, nothing really new, they still have a, they've gotten a few more grants in for their, um, fundraising, I'm not exactly sure of the amount, but, um, so that's, they're progressing, um, quite, they're going pretty along pretty well with that, so, they're happy with that, other than that, not a whole lot new.
Okay, very good, John, anything from the W M O?
We did not meet last month, I have a meeting this Thursday, though.
Okay, great, and I have one thing, that I attended the first of the Lake Elmo Airport Commission, um, meeting, it's made up of ten members from the airport, um, they're pilots or managers of the airport, so they're directly impacted with the, the business that takes place there, and then there are ten government, uh, officials, um, Gary Kresel, Ted Kozlowski, um, Mayor McHumber, um, among others, are also on the council, uh, the commission. Uh, it's gonna meet about four times a year, it's, this commission is good for two years, the, and it was a very initial preliminary meeting, and it was, uh, hosted by the MAC themselves, and then the, the next meeting will be turned over to co-chairs, one from the airport, one from the city, roll. And then it will continue to, to conduct business, um, the two items that were covered were bylaws, just how it will operate, and then a, a general scope of work for the two years. So, I have, uh, a variety of questions that are, I'm gonna continue to pursue with them, if anyone has concerns or questions for them, I welcome those questions, and, um, I'm still waiting for the presentation that was, um, shared, so I could even send it out to the rest of the council, so that you can get a feel for what's being covered, um, and I will keep you up to date. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Adam for, um, staff reports. You're muted, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, because of the technical issues we have tonight, uh, we're gonna dispense with the staff providing each individual report. Um, if there's any questions from the council, uh, we do have the chiefs, as well as the, uh, Assistant Administrator Taylor, um, Matt and myself available with any questions. The only, the one thing I wanted to, uh, mention is, we do have the farmer's market starting on the fourteenth, and, uh, the, on the nineteenth, we have the cleanup day event, which you had, uh, mentioned in the proclamations. Um, but other than that, we can just answer questions.
Questions from the council?
No, we also have the ice cream social on Wednesday night, this week, so I just throw that out there, at Lakeside Park, six to eight.
Ice cream social put on by the B C A L.
Mabel's is providing the ice cream this year. Thank you, Mabel's.
At Lakeside.
And there'll be live music from the lib- like, the library jammers, or something like that, I forgot their name.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well.
Okay, anything else that? Any other questions from the council for staff? All right, all right, um, any other items and announcements? We just covered? All right, so with that, um, again, sincere apologies to anyone who's been joining us remotely, we hope to have all of our, um, technology working smoothly next meeting, we will revisit the M P four, um, topic and others, so please join us next month, and with that, um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move re-adjourn.
Thank you, Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan, um, Adam, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor State Orders.
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, guys.
See you next month.